Good evening, call to order the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Lewisville Planning Commission Meeting with a roll call, please.
Chair Brownice.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Hefner.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
She is not here.
Excellent.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we'll move forward. And we're going to begin this evening with a item of new business, which is a discussion amongst ourselves, a brief presentation, I believe. No?
Staff has not put together a presentation on this item. We are presenting the material for the staff report with a would be happy to reiterate the point of that, which is, given the quantity of items that are either being carried over from prior years that have yet to be either started or finished, staff is recommending simply proceeding with that rollover list of items. And I think there was one new item in the packet. And would be happy to, you know, have this conversation with the planning commission. I think the city council is happy to hear recommendations made by commissioners, but we would rather give the commission time to have that conversation amongst themselves. And if there are suggestions that the commission would like to make, we're here to record that information, pass that along to the clerk.
Okay. And just to make it perfectly clear, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say for the sake of the audience and everybody else, what this is, this is the so the first item on the agenda is a discussion for the planning commission of the two thousand and twenty-three city council work plan. So every year, the city council creates a work plan where they lay out all the policy items they want to take up within a given year. And then oftentimes, you know, there's projects that roll over from year to year because you don't get them done in any particular year. So the memo in front of the planning commission has work plan items that are in progress and are rolling over into two thousand and twenty-three. So that's the Old Town overlay zoning. There's an open space zoning project, and then the comprehensive plan update, which was supposed to start this year, but it's been delayed because of a marshal fire. So the planning commission this evening is to kind of review if there's anything they want to propose that the city council take up as a policy consideration item, the planning commission, you know, with your authority, you can recommend zoning code changes, comprehensive plan changes. With the comprehensive plan update, you're probably not going to want to do that, you know, next year. But if there's something pressing that you all want to recommend, the one thing that staff is recommending is an old item is, which is dark sky residential lighting zoning ordinance update. We did a lot of work on that and it got set aside for, because of the marshal fire and other priorities. So we're recommending that that get put back as a recommendation to council. They will call items because they don't have enough time or bandwidth. But if you have anything you want to add to the work plan, I recommend that they add to the work plan. This is a time to talk about it.
Great, thanks. So at that point, I thought on the commission here, we could just speak if there was anything that stuck out in particular to anybody that you wanted to speak to or highlight emphasize that you're welcome to do that. Alternately, we can move forward with it as, as drafted by staff, but yes.
Yeah, I might just make a few comments. I was a little bit involved in the Old Town overlay zone district project, so I'm excited and very understanding of the need that that hasn't been completed, need to be put on hold. But I'm excited to see that one. I'm also very excited to see the comprehensive plan update on here. Just given the last year or two, I think it's pretty evident that that it's, I think there might be some, some citizen, not disconnect, but some citizen excitement or interest in seeing some, some changes to the current comprehensive plan. So I think I'm really excited to see both of those on the, on the list. And I'm very comfortable having the dark sky lighting on there as well. So I'm, I'm in support of what we have before us.
Great. All right. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm also in support with everything. I reviewed all of the priority number ones. I thought the one that was a priority number two, which was the sustainability and building code updates. Selfishly, as part of the planning commission, that really helps us to evaluate proposals. And an update to that for what the city council believes is desired would really help us in our deliberations when we're talking about proposals. So I don't know if that would make it to the priority one. I think currently it's priority two, but that may be.
Yeah, I would just mention that we are currently working on a commercial building code, energy efficiency code, which was on this year's work plan. We usually, we don't take building codes to planning commission, but it is, there is actually a draft going out for first reading this week, second readings in December. So it's, we adopted the two thousand and twenty-one international energy conservation code last year. This would be an upgrade for commercial development that we're working on right now.
That's what I was getting at. Yeah. And that's what I read in the community design, so.
Great.
Yeah, and I don't think I have a whole lot to add. I too am excited about the comp plan update and hope that there is a role for us both early in the process and then sort of throughout the process. The other thing in that category is the transportation master plan, which I know we saw early on with the consultants, and then I don't think we've seen again in some time. So just finding, finding an appropriate time to bring planning commission back into that process, if it moves forward in the next year, I think makes sense.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Osterman, if you want to, you could raise your hand. I think I would be able to see that. Oh, yes, there we go. And then I think you can unmute yourself as well.
Okay, you can hear me all right?
Yep.
I just wanted to add that I also support the proposed work plan and do not have anything to add. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I guess my final thoughts on that too were, I'm really excited to see us getting close to dark skies. I think when I first brought it up, I, eight, six, eight years ago, people thought I was crazy. I kept bringing it up and they still thought I was crazy. So it's great to make progress on that. And then I kind of got pigeonholed for a while, that person. And then also not as a priority, as an unpriority, but something I didn't want to see go away. Some years ago, we spent a fair amount of money, I believe, on consulting for wayfinding in the town and spent quite a bit of time on that. And I think we were at the point where per, I don't know if city council had selected their final option on that. But I would think those were still fresh. This is, so this was wayfinding for both bike paths and, and just street signage for around town. So something to keep simmering on the back burner if we could. All right. So were you looking for anything formal from us at this point then, or?
No, just feedback. I think we'll just, what we do now is we let the city clerk know if there were any recommendations coming from the commission. So we'll just let her know that you've endorsed everything we have on this list.
Great. Thank you both very much. All right. Next, next item of business is election of planning commission secretary. Unfortunately, a commissioner deal has had to move just one block outside of town. So we are without a commissioner and encouraging people also to apply for a planning commission at the same time. But with that, then I would like to open up this item, election of planning commission secretary. With that, we've discussed it somewhat, but want to make nominations?
Yeah, I can't think of anyone better than a Commissioner Moline to be the secretary of the planning commission. So I'd like to nominate Commissioner Moline.
Seconded.
Seconded. All right.
If he'll accept.
I will. Thank you.
He's passed on it a couple of times in the past, so we're excited to have him. It's not a very high-flying job. You get to have your name on all of the motions at the bottom of it, and you're third in line to run the meeting, for those people who are curious. So with that, you accept.
Watch out.
With that, then can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Unanimous. All right, you're in. Thank you. We do appreciate that. We'll move on then for public comment items that are not on this evening's agenda. If anybody would like to speak for something that is not a part of the agenda, we have an open time. So right now I cannot see other participants on Zoom, so I need to rely on staff to kind of check to see if there's a other participant.
There are no hands raised on, online.
Okay, great. So just to remind people, you can use the raise hand function on Zoom or star nine if participating by telephone. All right, seeing none, then we'll move into our seventh item, resolution thirteen series two thousand and twenty-two, recommending denial of the Red Tail Ridge preliminary and final plat. This has been continued most.
Before we move into this, can I just ask if we have minutes to approve?
Apparently not.
We did not have minutes to approve this time.
Okay.
Okay. And then we, if you want, we can begin with since I just mentioned what it is, we can then begin with anybody who needs to recuse themselves.
Yeah, that's going to be me. I'm not going to participate in this matter because I have a conflict of interest, so excuse myself.
Thank you very much. So this was continued from previous meeting, and we are in the current point right now where, where commissioners are deliberating. So public comment has been closed and, and there is no new information that any of us are able to take into account. But Commissioner Howe was unavailable for last meeting, so we're going to kind of begin with opening up the floor to him. And then as we discussed, if you have questions of us and further discussion you want to kind of prompt with us, please. We welcome it.
Yeah, so I guess I should just note that I was not available or not here for the last meeting, but I did watch the entire deliberation from beginning to end. I thought that was a great discussion you guys had, very patient for you guys to, and I think listening to each other and a very, very constructive discussion. So just, so constructive that I don't think I have much to add to it. I think most of the points were, were created and proposed that, that I listened to and thought, yeah, that's a good point. And I think most of the, most of the discussion was put into the proposal for tonight.
And thanks, just to discuss process a little bit more, right? So the, as I mentioned, the current motion is to recommendation denial, as has been drafted and distributed. If that did not pass, then we, we could entertain the possibility of a motion to approve with conditions. Alternately, if we found ourselves in a, in a tie, again, we could continue to a next month's meeting. So with that.
I have nothing else to add. I don't think I can add anything that wasn't added at the last meeting. It was a very good discussion. Appreciate what you guys did.
So in, so at this point, then we would move into a vote again?
Yeah, I, would you like me to make that motion?
Let's see, did you, so, so the motion to deny captures your concerns at that point?
Well, I think it's a bit of a compromise, as you had mentioned in an earlier meeting. I think it's probably short of what some people want to pass and, and probably maybe short of what some people want to not pass. I, I think it's a way to point out some shortfalls and maybe offer some constructive changes that could be made by the applicant. I don't know if this result satisfies all parties, but I think it could become constructive and a compromise between different groups.
And so where are you leaning at this point?
When I read the, the existing denial, I did tend to agree with the non-compliance of some of the some of the points. The traffic, the drainage in the natural states. So, so I was in support of the denial.
Okay, thanks. With that, then, yeah, a motion to approve the denial as previously drafted? The roll call vote, please. Was there?
Is.
Sorry, what's that?
Motion in a second.
On a motion? So I can read aloud, adoption of resolution thirteen series twenty-two, recommending denial of the Red Tail Ridge preliminary and final plat. Red Tail Ridge filing number one preliminary and final subdivision plat for a three hundred and eighty-nine point one acre property located northwest of US thirty-six and Northwest Parkway and southeast of South Eighty-Eighth Street and Campus Drive. Do we have a motion?
Motion to vote on that.
Right. A motion to approve the denial.
Prove the denial.
Right. And then Commissioner Osterman, do we have you?
I second.
All right. Thank you. With a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
No.
Commissioner Moline.
No.
So that leaves us again at a two-two position. And if, if it was different circumstances where all of us were here, we would have to continue our discussions until somebody wavered. In this case, because we know that there's one person who is not here, then we will, we can save the discussion. And when we have a future full commission, then we can have the vote again.
Yeah, so I think you could continue this to the next meeting, which is December eighth.
Great.
And then hopefully we could have all five members who are eligible here at that time. If not, the commission may want to consider kind of a special meeting time where we can get all five members together so that we could conclude this.
Let's hope it works on December eighth.
Yeah.
But because we have to, we have to continue to date certain, so.
We have to continue to a date certain, so I yeah, so I think December eighth, for now, we can't really confer with Commissioner Krantz on alternative dates. So I think we should just pick December eighth, but I think maybe if we, if we can't get five members on December eighth, we could try to be more proactive on a time that works for everybody. So we'll, we'll poll the commission. And if you can't all meet on December eighth, we'll probably start asking for some alternative times to get together when all five of you can get together and make a final vote.
Okay. Let's focus on December eighth. I would hope that the date would not be flexible. So with that, then I would entertain a motion to continue to December eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Yes, we can agree, agree to disagree at times, which is totally fine. So, all right, with that, then we will move into our first item of new business. And I think we can welcome up Ellie to bring us up to speed on what that is. But actually, if you can pause just a moment while we give Dietrich a moment here to camp out. All right, great. Thank you. You can be what am I missing here? So, yeah, if we can begin, first of all, we want to check on, well, you can state what it is, and then we'll check on conflict interest.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is North End Block eleven, a PUD GDP, a PUD and GDP amendment plat and easement vacation, which is under resolution number sixteen series two thousand and twenty-two.
And actually, I do have a long script to read here. So yes, I will now open the public hearing on a request for just that, a general development plan amendment, plan unit development amendment and replat with easement vacations at fifteen oh one South Boulder Road. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone or in person may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to fill out a speaker's card available at the end of that table. And if you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function, or if you're participating by computer or star nine of calling in by telephone. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. No pooling of comments is permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, prove with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification, please?
So yes, commissioners, the meeting was duly noted per our municipal code requirements.
Thank you. Do any planning commissioners have disclosures? We already checked on that. No. Thank you. Please proceed with the staff presentation.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. As mentioned, this item lying before you is resolution number sixteen series two thousand and twenty-two, which recommends approval of a general development plan amendment, a plan due at development amendment, and a final plat with easement vacations for a mixed-use development at Block eleven of North End, which as the, as the chair mentioned, is also addressed as fifteen oh one South Boulder Road. So for a little bit of background, this property is four point five seven acres and is zoned planned community, commercial and residential. And the original development was North End as established through a general development plan, planned via development and plat in two thousand and six for the seventy-three point eight acre neighborhood. And the property was, and the property in question tonight is part of Planning Area One in that general development plan. And it was replotted in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twelve to create Block eleven. And for a little bit of extra background, in two thousand and seventeen, the city approved a third general development plan amendment, final plat and final PUD for this block. And the third GDP amendment did authorize thirty-eight residential units in this planning area as well, as well as forty thousand square feet of commercial space. The final plat established Block eleven's utility and drainagesments, but did not create any separate lots. The planned unit development proposed a mixed-use neighborhood consistent with the densities proposed in the third GDP amendment. So the changes that the applicant is requesting includes a fourth amendment to the GDP, which accommodates changes to the permitted housing types. So the maximum number of residential dwelling units and commercial square footages are not changing from the third amendment as part of this. But there are, the tables here do show that there are changes to the land use area summary, which allocates all the residential acreage in Planning Area One to multifamily residential and eliminates single-family and townhome duplex housing types. So you can see in red on, you can see in red on this table that those numbers have now all been allocated towards multifamily, which is one point nine acres on the site roughly. And another change that happened to coincide with this is a changing of the map of land uses on the GDP, which has been revised to reflect multifamily residential only. And that's shown as kind of this honeycomb pattern rather than a mix of uses from the third GDP amendment. And the proposal also does include a final plat. So this is a replat to subdivide Block eleven in, from its current single lot into three different lots. And two of the lots, Lot one and Lot two are used, are proposed for residential, whereas Lot three is proposed for commercial development. And the existing easements that were mentioned previously as part of the two thousand and seventeen plat, there are a couple that are proposed to be vacated because they're not necessary from, they're not necessary for this current PUD amendment. And this will be further evaluated at the city council hearing, but we did just want to make you aware of the locations of these, which are located in red. And there are also some easement exhibits included in the attachments as well. And moving on to the planned unit development, the planned unit development currently proposes seventeen buildings, which include four commercial retail and office buildings on the southern half of the site towards South Boulder Road and thirteen residential multifamily buildings, which contain a total of thirty-eight dwelling units on the north side of the site. The site layout is fairly similar to the two thousand and seventeen PUD amendment and includes prime features such as the north-south private drive that connects South Boulder Road and Hecklow Way. And it still maintains an east-west access drive onto the site off of Blue Star Lane, which is located in a similar location to the previous PUD. The PUD amendment also proposes alleyways for access to the residential units, which are shown here on the north side, and these, these are also included as easements in the plat. And one thing to note, too, is that there are walkways that are adjacent to streets and trails and do connect the site to various aspects outside of it. So one of them, for example, is the sidewalk over on the west side, which connects to the existing trail, which is proposed to be maintained as part of the PUD amendment. And one of the other features, too, is you can see there are walkways going north, south through the site to the courtyard feature, as well as walkways that connect the site to South Boulder Road, as well as to Hecklow over on this side. And as part of the parking for the site, there are ninety-two spaces that are provided for the thirty-eight residential units. And this is provided through a mixture of two stall garages that are going to be part of each unit, along with for buildings eleven and twelve, two driveway spaces. And for the commercial part of the site, there's a total of a hundred and forty-eight parking spaces provided for the office and retail uses. And some of these spaces are proposed in the PUD amendment to be used for snow storage, but the site does maintain the required one hundred and forty-two spaces at all times, based on the way that the parking plan is developed. The site does also include sixteen bicycle spaces where fifteen are required, and these are shown as red boxes over in this area. So the ones on this side have six spaces, I believe, and then there's one that has four. So I think actually these two are six, and then there's four spaces over here. And they are all adjacent to commercial development. And the site does propose the, does provide the required number of EV parking spaces per section seventeen point twenty point one seventy of the municipal code. And these EV charging spaces are separated out per use, and more information on that can be found in the table of the PUD parking plan, which is on sheet five. All right, moving on to the design of the commercial development. So as mentioned, there are four total commercial buildings on the site, which do have more significant review per the CDDSG or commercial development design standards and guidelines. So to start building, one is a two-story structure with retail on the first floor, and then it has office on the second floor. And each floor is five thousand four hundred and seventy-one square feet, which totals up to ten thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet. And the location for all these buildings is also shown on, in red on the key map in the top left, just for reference of where these are relative to the rest of the site. And this building does have varying forms to add to architectural interest and depth of the building. And most materials on the forms are contiguous between the first and second stories. The forms in this case consist of stucco cement, cementitious lap siding and board and band siding. Small amounts of mel sign are used on the west and east elevations on the first story for this building. Building two is, is also two stories and contains retail on the ground floor and offices on the second floor. This building has seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five square feet per floor, which totals up to fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety. This building has 7,295 square feet per floor, which totals up to 14,590 square feet. And building two consists of mostly flat roofs and does have some butterfly roofs on the east and west of the building, as seen in the elevations. And it has similar materials to building one excluding the metal siding accent areas. And it also has varied forms, which are broken up by a combination of entry fascias on the bottom near the windows and entryways and a transition to stucco and other materials between many of the first and second story areas. And moving on to building three, this is a 8,539 square foot, three-story structure. And the first story has 3,472 square feet of retail on the ground floor, as well as 4,134 square feet of office on the second floor. And the third floor is smaller towards the center of the building with 633 square feet of office. The height of the building does exceed the four, the 40, the 40-foot maximum per the GDP and does require a height waiver, which I will discuss further into the presentation. And this building, as well as the other commercial buildings, contains varied forms with a mixture of flat roofs and shed roofs. And a majority of the building is a two-story mass with a smaller central three-story element that contains a balcony that faces on, that faces north near the residential properties. The first story is brick siding on the first floor with a portion extending into the second and third story. And this is broken up by board and band between the first and second stories. There is a fiber cement panel material included on the second and third story facades as well. And the last commercial building is building four, which is a 4,365 square foot, one-story retail building, which does have an outdoor patio area on the southwest side of the building. And the building's form is more simplistic than the other commercial buildings on the site and is broken up by material changes and similar facial elements on the windows. The roof's mostly flat with a shed roof on the southern portion. And the materials in this case consist of brick siding, cladding and cementitious lap siding. And as part of this development on the north side, there are 13 residential buildings proposed. And there's a total of 38 units across a mixture of duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. And these come in two different architectural styles, including modern and farmhouse. And the different elevations of each of the fronts of the buildings are shown on the slide as well. And the materials here are similar to the ones included in the commercial buildings, including board and bad and horizontal siding, fiber cement panels, brick and stucco. And as mentioned, these match both the commercial buildings and some of the building materials found in other North End developments. And because the scope is a mixture of commercial and residential uses, regarding the landscape plan, staff did determine that the normal CDDSG requirements would only be examined on Lot 3, which is outlined here per the subdivision plat boundaries. And basically what we were going to be looking at is perimeter landscaping, which would be reviewed along South Boulder Road, as well as the building site landscaping and the parking lot landscaping requirements. So on South, on the South Boulder Road frontage, the applicants proposed 17 trees or 16 trees are required. And as part of that, there are nine trees on the southern portion down here. And there is a tree survey included that does show that four of these trees are going to be removed and replaced just due to the condition of the existing trees. So it's maintaining those nine trees criminally, along with some additional trees that are added as part of this landscape plan. And then, as mentioned previously, there's 148 commercial spaces, which totals out to a required 19 parking lot landscape trees. And the applicants proposed 20 of these trees and parking islands and spaces are areas adjacent to the parking spaces. And the CDDSG also requires that 25% of the area around a building's perimeter includes a minimum six-foot wide planting area. And from what staff saw, all four commercial buildings have at least 25% of their perimeter bordered by a six-foot or wider planting area to meet those requirements. And moving on to the landscaping around the residential portions, this is, staff have found this does not need to comply with the CDSG, but it does include a lot of nutrient shrub plantings between the driveways and alleyway spaces between the properties. And even though it's not subject to the CDDSG requirements, there are similar elements such as planting areas around the perimeter of the landscape of the residential properties. And one other element that is proposed on the site between buildings two and three, which you can see on the key map, is a courtyard as a pedestrian amenity. And this courtyard does, it consists of various paving and the pavers are both in a plank and herringbone pattern as delineated on the left side. And the colors and pavers are shown to match the adjacent building colors, so will be compatible design-wise. And the courtyard does also provide various landscaping, as you can see on the right side, as well as some trash facilities. Basically, you know, trash receptacles for users of the site and stone seat walls, which are shown in this dark gray, as dark gray rectangles on here. Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. All right. So moving on, there is, the PUD does also include a phasing plan, which the 2017 PUD amendment also contained one. And it maintains the general phasing concept as the last amendment in the sense that there's a mix of residential and commercial buildings being phased out through the site. And what this does is, and the only difference is there's different numbers of units and commercial areas in each case. And the phases allow for residential and commercial buildings to be constructed concurrently. But there is a provision that was added that the residential building permits in each phase are not to be issued until the foundation inspection for the commercial buildings in each phase is approved. And per, and this application is also subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance, which was adopted last summer. And the applicants in this case are proposing the city's fee and lieu option, which they, and the reasons they do that is because they feel that it was entitled planned and financed as part of the 2017 GDP PUD and plat. And also there's reason to believe that the city can leverage fees and funding for more units off-site. And basically, the, having the fee and lieu option is determinant from city council approval. So city council will be the ultimate deciding factor in whether or not this is an option that the applicants could propose. But we didn't want to bring it forward and mention that the fee and lieu option for inclusionary housing is being proposed in this PUD. And staff did receive some comments about the traffic on the site. So we did dig into it a little bit more and found that there were traffic studies from both 2006 and 2011 for the entire overall North End development. And what we found from those is that the traffic studies assumed for 362 residential units and 65,000 square feet of commercial space, which were numbers, the 65,000 was previously approved under older GDPs, but has since been limited to 40,000. So over time, North End actually has a lower total of 350 units and 40,000 square feet of commercial area, which is less than was accounted for in these reports. And we did talk with our public works department and from our understanding, public works did find that the traffic assumptions are adequate to accommodate this development. And one of the things that is requested on this, as mentioned previously, is a waiver to a GDP requirement for a maximum height of 40 feet. And this is requested for four different buildings on the site. So one of which is building number three, which is a commercial building and then buildings 13, 14 and 17, which are residential buildings. And this table shows the waiver amount that's being requested and the total building height. That's the result of that waiver. So going into more detail on those building height waivers, building three proposes a five-inch increase to the 50-foot, to the 40-foot height limit. And the height increase allows for a shed roof form that does stick up about five inches over the allowed height. And staff does find that this roof form is compatible with other roof forms on the site and that the third story element does add variation in architectural interest to the site while providing additional office space vertically, rather than increasing the building footprint. And regarding the three residential buildings that are asking for waivers, we found that the, so the elevations on the slide show the height of the building relative to adjacent structures, just for reference of what it's going to look like relative to other buildings on the site. And basically, what staff have found is that the waivers allow for modern, higher ceiling residential structures that provide a garage and living area at the main level and two stories of living area above that, which is considered to be a more efficient and improved design. It's something that's seen in other developments around the state. And then the density, height and design are compatible with the existing North End Block 12 multifamily units, which are adjacent to the property as well. And for these reasons, staff does support the requested height waivers from the applicant. And analyzing the GDP, which is found, analyzing the GDP, staff found that it's compliant with Chapter 17.72 and meets the purpose and applicability standards. So in this case, that includes that the GDP amendment encourages coordinated community design by allowing a mixed-use buffer zone between the major arterial of South Boulder Road and the residential uses further into the North End neighborhood. And regarding the analysis for the plat, the staff finds that the final plat for North End Block 11 conforms with the requirements of Title 16 of the municipal code. The plat complies, the plat is also compliant with the comprehensive plan because it supports an urban pattern that's more compact and walkable through its creation of alleyways for the residential units and the division of the block into smaller lots. The plat is also compliant with the GDP since it meets the minimum lot standards for each use that's proposed. And regarding analysis of the PUD, staff finds that the PUD is compatible with the GDP with the included height waivers for the four buildings mentioned previously. The commercial portion of the PUD is compliant with the CDDSG and meets parking and landscape requirements listed within that. The PUD is also compatible with Chapter 17.28 of the municipal code as well. And one thing to note too is that the development is, is found to be compliant with the comprehensive plans framework for urban corridor properties. And the site is also compliant with the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan policies, which will be discussed further in the next slides. So the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan does have one element related to its building height that we did want to discuss a bit further. And basically what this area, what this, what the building height plan does is anticipates development along South Boulder Road to be primarily one and two stories for the southern half of the property and two to three stories for the north half of the property, as shown in the key map on the top of the slide. So to, so one thing that is noted in the South Boulder Road area plan is that residential buildings on the north half of the property are proposed at three stories and the small area plan has conditions for third stories that it contemplates, including factors such as design, public improvements and limited impacts on prop, on properties, view sheds or shadows. So the three-story design allows for the site to have more compact, modern designs. And the height and massing is compatible in scale with the neighboring Block 12 development from North End. The buildings have a minimum 35-foot north-south separation between each structure, which mitigates the impacts of the shadows. And staff therefore finds that the three-story building heights are compatible on this site. And you can see on the bottom here, this is a elevation showing on the right side is the, one of the residential buildings, building 15, which is one of the duplexes relative to the massing and, and distance between the North End Block 12 adjacent multifamily building. And on the southern half of the site, commercial buildings are subject to one to two stories in height in this height plan. And one thing to note is that there is, building three does have a three-story element, which is approximately 630 square feet that's proposed in the center of the building. And one thing that staff did note is that the building height is similar to the height in the, to the roof forms in building two, which is considered to be a two-story structure. And because of the similarity in scaling, staff found that the impact of the third story element could be analyzed similarly to the conditions required to add a third, to add a second story in the small area plan. And the design is found to be compatible with the existing North End architecture with the materials and forms used, such as the shed roofs, the variation of the building facade depth and other similar elements. And the building does have a setback of 100 feet from South Boulder Road and 58 feet from the nearest residential building, which helps mitigate its impacts to shadows and view sheds for these buildings. The element helps also add architectural interest to the building, which helps with its compatibility to other buildings on the site. And it has similar materials, which also help it blend in with the development. In addition, another thing staff wanted to note is that the commercial buildings do vary from one to three stories tall on the site, as shown on this slide. These are all to scale with each other on here. And based on this, staff sees that staff found that it provides building height variation on the southern area of the site. And staff does support that the third story smaller element is compatible with the small area plan, even though it doesn't necessarily contemplate a three-story building. And based on this information, staff are recommending approval of Resolution Number 16 Series 2022, requesting a general development plan amendment, a final plan unit development amendment, and a final plat with easement vacations for mixed-use development consisting of 38 residential units and about 40,562 gross square feet of commercial area at Block 11 of North End. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but that does conclude staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. We will open it up for questions of staff. Commissioner Heffner.
Yeah, thanks. That was a really great presentation. I guess my first question is just trying to understand the, the key differences from the last version that was approved. It seems to me the overall mix of housing types isn't actually that different. It's just a matter of it being attached rather than detached. Do you think that's a fair, a fair way of putting it?
Yeah, so this does include, as you mentioned, it is all attached units versus detached from the previous one. But the units are different, there are different bedroom sizes. I didn't go into as much detail on there, but there are a mixture of two and three bedroom units in there as well.
And also dropping the tone on that question, line of questioning, right? So dropping that, that townhouse designation and moving it into what it is now, can you describe that a little bit? Maybe that'll?
Yeah, so there are, I may ask for directors who care to help me out with the term, with the differentiation. But from what we could tell on the plans, the original plat for this area, when this plan first came in with, the first iteration of this new PUD amendment did come in with townhomes. And these were all individually platted units. Whereas now it's all under one solid plating and we're assuming will be condo platted out once it's developed. So because of that, we saw it having more of a multifamily designation rather than the townhome, where each one is separately platted owned lot.
Great, thanks. And we can follow up with the applicant on that one?
And then my only other question is on the traffic. I know you spoke briefly to the traffic studies in that we looked at it and sort of determined the traffic pattern. It was going to be adequate to accommodate the traffic, but the way I read the comment we got, it's more concerned about speeding and sort of traffic behavior than about the adequacy to, to handle the traffic flows. Is that an issue that staff has looked at?
Yeah, so we did communicate with public works department about that as well. I don't recall the specifics of the history of that ride-in, ride-out that had concern. I'm not sure if, Rod, do you recall?
No, I don't, I don't recall anything. I think, you know, if there is a concern, I think the concern is with the existing roadway and traffic calming. So that would maybe be something that's outside of the scope of this PUD because, you know, those roads are already constructed. Certainly, the city could look at some traffic calming, if that made sense within different areas.
So I guess my follow-up is, I thought there was an extension of, of Sweet Clover from, sorry, I'm going to get the names of the streets wrong, of Sweet Clover, where it, where it currently dead ends into Heckla. Does that get extended as part of what we're looking at?
I see. So there's concern about that straight, that road that cuts straight through the middle, going down to that ride-in, ride-out?
And I, I'm just trying to, to check my understanding and I'm sure we'll hear comments about it. But as I, as I read the, the comment we received on this topic, it was about that extension of Sweet Clover and potential speeding there. And whether we could consider traffic calming or whether that was part of the design?
I see. Okay. So sorry, I didn't quite understand the question. I don't think we've considered traffic calming, but we could ask the applicant of the planning commission one and we could look into that with them too. There's different ways to do it that are, I guess, more invasive than others, depending on what we want to achieve. You know, you could do speed bumps or speed humps or bump outs within the road, but we haven't considered that in the design with them, if we felt like it was an issue. It may be a neighborhood concern. It isn't something that staff flagged just in our initial review.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Those are the only questions I had.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Heffner. Additional questions of staff? Commissioner Howe?
A few thoughts and comments. Is there any, to maintain consistency and preserve consistency through the South Boulder corridor, is there any requirement for discussion with our city forester for proposals like this?
So this proposal was previously reviewed by our Parks and Rec Department. And the staff member unfortunately is not with the city anymore, but we did have a staff member who has historically reviewed landscape planning in the city to ensure consistency. And he checks, he normally would check species of the trees planted.
Okay, great. Another question about the, the fee and lieu. If, you said the fee and lieu may not be approved or may be approved by the city council. If they did not approve the fee and lieu and required them to do affordable housing, would it come back to a new PUD for us to evaluate?
No, the affordable housing really gets administered outside of the PUD process. It's, you know, any new residential now has to have inclusionary housing. But that's through agreement at the PUD stage, but it's really not. Um, but that's through agreement, um, at the PUD stage, but it's really not. You know, I don't think we see it as a part of the PUD itself. So it's really just if you approve of the how, you know, if you approve of the, the housing, um, and the associated standards for the housing generally. Um, and then anybody has to provide that, the inclusionary or one of the alternatives.
And just to clarify on that note, so right, I mean, it's not a, we can't say, oh. If it was actually included, we would vote for it if it, because it's fee and lieu. I mean, the law is that it allows fee and lieu, right?
So the way our inclusionary ordinance is written is. If you aren't building on site, the city, basically the city council has to grant an exception. For anything other than building on site. So the fee and lieu would be an exception. So it, I would say it prefers. Our code has a strong preference for building on site, but, um, that anybody can ask for an exception to do the fee and lieu and there's some other alternatives provided.
Great, thank you.
Can you talk about the lighting, um, along South Boulder Road? I think there's a sidewalk there and then the lighting along the path that runs north-south.
Yeah, um, let me see if I, it wasn't included in the slideshow, but let me see if I can pull up the PUD so I could discuss that a bit further with you. Sorry, just need to get it to load and then I can hold the photometric plan that's included on the site. Yeah, the photometric plan does include, one of the things that does take into account is some of the existing lighting, but let me see if I can get a. Fair picture for you guys. So I'm sorry, did you repeat your question with the lighting?
Yeah, could you just review what kind of lighting, um, is provided on the South Boulder Road? And then the pedestrian trail that runs north, uh, yeah, would run north-south.
Sure. So I know the plan did initially call for some additional lighting on the trail, but. That was reviewed by Public Works and Parks and Rec staff and it was something that wasn't desired on that part of the site. So all lighting fixtures were included within the site itself. So the closest ones to that trail area are, there are light fixtures over here as pole lights. As well as each residential unit, both on the front and the back of the property does have a architecturally mounted light as well. And then there's also a pole light in both parking, both the residential alleyway and the parking space here. And I could.
Sorry to interrupt, we're not looking at the one you're referencing.
Could you use your pointer?
Can you put that screen, can you put that up on screen?
Yeah, why is it, let me see if I can back out of that so it'll show. It was not where it was not showing that. So here we go, so. Ju- just because there's a lot of jumble up here, so. The trail is over on this west side over here and there, there's a light proposed, basically a pole light on the alleyway area.
Sorry, one other thing, um, if you can use the mouse, that ends up working well, because then people who are on Zoom, they can also watch it. Um, but I know it can be kind of troublesome at times, so. So instead of using the laser pointer, yeah.
Yeah, let me, I'm just trying to find a icon that's most visible on, on the reader. So yeah, there's a light, so there's a light pole that's proposed on the alleyway area here. And then the other closest light fixtures to the trail would be the parking lot pole light as well. And then there is one egress door coming off of the building one commercial area. That does also have a fixture, but as mentioned previously, when there were trail lights that were proposed, but both the Public Works and Parks and Rec Department. Didn't desire to have additional lights in that area. And there are existing lights that are along South Boulder Road, but I believe besides entryway lights on the access drives. I don't believe there are any additional lights proposed off of South Boulder Road.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner?
That, um, wh- is there any feedback as to why they, um, why they thought no additional lights? I don't know if you have that information or not.
Uh, I don't recall the exact conversations, but it was brought up with them. And the same, they had similar comments for, there initially additional lights proposed on some of the right areas between the right of way here. And the property and those were also, because there were existing pole lights in that area, there wasn't a desire to have additional lighting there.
Great. But I'll, I'll pass the torch here and then, but I may come back with a couple more.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Molly.
Yeah, um, thanks very much, Planner Hassan. That was a great presentation. Um. I, you may have answered this question already, so some of the, or at least one of the comments that I saw that we had gotten was. Pertained to the intersection of South Boulder and Blue Star. And my sense is that what, what I, I think what I'm hearing is that because that's on South Boulder and already. Uh, i- i- you know, not part of this plat. The, the, you know, future improvements or warrants for changes to that intersection would. Would fall really to the city at this point and would really not be subject. Would not really be the subject of discussion for this evening's PUD. Is that, is that true? Or, or is it something that w- we could consider and talk about this evening?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's something relevant to the plat, but I'll have Director Zucaro confirm that.
Okay. Right, so, you know, I, I think, eh, if they were proposing, you know, to increase density. You know, I think this road network was built with the development density in mind and they're, they're not. Increasing the density, commercial or residential, so I don't think, um, we, we would recommend. That there be additional capacity, uh, or that capacity is needed. We really didn't do an updated study. Because those land uses and densities weren't changing. But I think if this were to build out and these. Road networks weren't operating appropriately, it would be the city's responsibility. To make improvements.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get a clarification on that, so, all right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, another question. Are there any? Net zero requirements or energy requirements for these buildings?
Uh, I believe we're still working on changing the building code for that. I don't know if Rob has.
As I would say, what, what are the existing requirements, if any?
So there are no net zero requirements. On the commercial, we don't have net zero on commercial, we just have net zero on residential. I, I am not certain whether the net zero code is applicable to this building type, honestly. I'd have to confer with the building official. To see, but, because we do have net zero for a lot of residential product. Yeah, but not multifamily. It's limited to single family and townhome, and I'm not sure where this falls in that.
That would be an important detail to.
Yeah, but I, I mean, in our mind, that's a building code issue and it's not really a PUD zoning issue. So if it, if it applies, it would definitely apply. So, but if there's a question about PUD standard in relation to it, let us know and we can try to, try to address that.
Definitely. Commissioner Osterman, if at any time you want to speak, please raise your hand and just. Because I think I can see it when you raise your hand now, so. Hello, yes, go ahead.
Thanks, um, yeah, just to say that I don't have any questions. Um, the questions I have have already been asked by other commissioners. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, any final questions of staff?
One more question, so if you could just review the types of, there's, there's one road. That we're really discussing that's intersecting South Boulder Road and. I'm trying to think, I don't believe there's a light there. So is that, is that a right and left turn road?
Yeah, I believe it's a.
South Boulder.
Yeah, I believe it's a right in, right out.
But no left.
No, no left out or left in, there's a median there, right in, right out.
That's what I was thinking. That's why I was, okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that then, I'd like to, actually, why don't we take five minutes? Quick five and then we'll invite the applicant up after that. Thank you. Great, and if you can be with your name and address, please.
Melissa Sherburne, two-six-two Belford Street, Frisco, Colorado.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's great to be with you. I am Melissa Sherburne and I am a planner. Um, I'm also an owner's rep for Markel Homes. Um, first, I would, I just want to take a minute and thank Ellie. She did such a great job. There, there's, uh, not a whole lot she didn't cover, but we're going to add a. Little bit on the background of the company and the project site, et cetera, here tonight. Um, let me just get my presentation going here. All right, so, uh, just to give you an overview of our presentation. I'll introduce you to the Markel team. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit more about the project context. We will dive down into the details of the architecture and design a bit more. Elaborate on the things that Ellie did talk about already. We will also talk about the planning and policy and then, of course, answer any additional questions that you might have. So here with me tonight is the Markel team and let me see if I can turn around and introduce them one by one. We have Michael Markel. You want to wave? Michael is president and founder of Markel Homes. Uh, we have Jason Markel. Jason, he is vice president of, uh, development. We also have Ripley Design, who are the lead designers on this project. We have Sam Coots, who you'll, uh, meet here in a moment as well. Sam, uh, we also have Joel Weichert. Also a designer. Um, we have MPD Engineering, we have McDowell Transportation. Uh, Markel is, uh, represented by Foster Graham Attorneys and we also have an attorney here tonight. Craig, thank you. Um, and I also did want to mention that. These projects have such a huge impact on local economy and so. Markel Homes, of course, employs dozens upon dozens of local, uh, subcontractors that, of course, would be impacted by this project. And be involved as well, so I'd just like to give them a nod. So if you don't know Markel, uh, they are, we like to call ourselves Boulder County's local builder. And last year, we were honored to be awarded by the Daily Camera, the Best Builder Award by, uh, readers. From the Boulder County area. Uh, Michael started the company in nineteen seventy-three and if you talk to any homeowner of any of the neighborhoods. It really comes down to trust, customer service and design. And the company is really proud of all of the neighborhoods that, um, have been built throughout Boulder County over the last thirty years or so. Um, we also wanted to mention that Markel is involved in the Marshall Home rebuild and so. We're offering five floor plans to families that have been displaced and are rebuilding and so. Really proud to be a part of that and, uh, want to get homeowners back on their feet and back in their homes. So some of the projects you might be familiar with, there's about a dozen neighborhoods here throughout Boulder County. These two, of course, are in Lewisville, North End. Um, of course, we're talking about tonight and then right down the road, Blue Sage. Um, so it's a great legacy, working with this community, in this community and happy to bring this forward tonight. I also wanted to mention, because I know there's a very strong sustainability bent in the community. We really pride ourselves on this. Last year in twenty twenty-one, the USGBC, which of course runs the lead program, awarded Markel Homes. The Leadership Award for Outstanding Commitment to Advancing Green Building and this was very significant. That year, I believe Markel Homes was the only construction company, uh, home builder that received it. It was an array of. A variety of companies throughout Colorado and, um, it was only a handful of companies and Markel, uh, won that award. So it's a huge honor from USGBC. All of these, uh, characteristics are. We aim to, uh, deliver them to the homes. Depending on the product, whether or not they're LEED certified or another, uh, green seal certification depends on, uh, the neighborhood, but. Um, we couldn't be Boulder's best, best builder without being a green builder as well, so. So we're very proud of that accolade. So a little more on North End and Ellie really touched on a lot of this, so, um, I'll just kind of emphasize a few things here. You know, this is really decades in the making and, uh, as, as Ellie pointed out, it began in two thousand and six. There were five planning areas. This is the last one. It's approximately ten percent of the total density. Um, just thirty-eight final units here envisioned as mixed use. Um, we feel like tonight's application is really, uh, holding true to that original vision. Over twenty-five percent approximately of the total land area is dedicated to open space. And of course, that neighborhood serving commercial where residents can really walk to, um, services is so desirable for people that. Um, live in this neighborhood, existing residents and of course, future residents. Um, back on the sustainability, uh, I wanted to point out as a planner, I just think it's very important. Uh, for us to recognize that this is, uh, what I would consider infill. It's existing infrastructure. Not only was it envisioned to be such, um, you'll see in later slides that it fits into the urban, uh, fabric of Lewisville and so. Um, this, this final phase, uh, being approximately ten percent. On existing infrastructure, I just really want to point out, this is no new sprawl, uh, in adding to the housing stock that of course. Not only in Lewisville, but for Boulder County is so, uh, imperative throughout Colorado, really. So we're really proud of that. Then on this slide, Sam is going to talk a little bit more about it. Ellie already brought it up. Despite the cha- um, despite the change, uh, in the application, we're still. Holding true to the vision of these very important plans and so the policy guidance provided. In the comp plan as well as the, uh, South Boulder Road Small Area Plan. Envision this as urban infill. Level development and so we just want to point that out. You all know this area better than I do. You know where it's located. Um, it's within these, uh, very, um, thoughtfully planned areas along South Boulder Road and so. This cha- these changes are consistent with the original application and with these policy guidance that live on today. Um, and so with that, I will turn it over to Sam Coots to talk about architecture and design.
Thank you. Thanks, Melissa. Uh, Sam Coots with Ripley Design. I'm a landscape architect and land planner.
Address, please.
Four nineteen Canyon Avenue, Suite two hundred and Fort Collins, Colorado. Um, I'm, I'm just going to quickly run through site design, some of the whys behind the decisions we've, we've been making. Uh, touch on the GDP, whys behind that amendment and then, uh, architecture as well. Uh, and then I'll wrap it up with a nice bow, talking more about policy. The GDP amendment, so, as we've been saying, this dates back to two thousand and six and it's the final phase. And, and North End is this really great eclectic neighborhood that was master planned as a mixed-use neighborhood. This, this diagram shows on the left, the previous, uh, pre-tonight, uh, GDP. And all of the different colors are all of the different land uses you can find in North End. On the right is the proposal brought to you tonight and. Down right on the, on the south corner there is, is block eleven, planning area number one, which is really the site for tonight. The, the reason, the main reason we're here to amend that GDP is to envision a better transition of land use. Uh, the, the previous plan you can see on the left had a mix of different residential housing types. On the northern boundary of, of block eleven. It starts going from west to east with single-family detached townhomes to multifamily. The, the commercial has always been idealized to be on that southern side and, and it remains there tonight. Land use transitioning, uh, is, is typically done from most intense to least intense as you get away from. Other intensities. So we have South Boulder Road, a, a very intense road. And as we move north, we get less intense into the existing single-family neighborhood, so. Similarly to the west, there's existing commercial and to the east, we have some open space. So really, looking at the previous plan, it was a bit backwards from what traditional land use transition feels like. We, we had single-family detached, abutting directly against, uh, an existing car wash. Uh, then transitioning the density as you get closer to open space. Just a bit different from, from what you typically see. So the amendment for the GDP tonight brings that more in line with, with a normal transition of land use intensity. Getting all multifamily along that northern boundary as it transitions to the existing multifamily. Which then goes to the townhomes and, and the single family, uh, just stepping everything back. Uh, so with that, looking at the PUD, that the specific, specific site plan. to be honest, there's not a huge change between what was previously approved and what is approved here tonight. We still have four commercial buildings on the south. There's 13 buildings of residential on the north now. The number of units remains unchanged, 38. The number of square footage of the commercial space remains unchanged. Even the framework of the design still remains the same. It's the same three points of access along Heckla, South Boulder Road and Blue Star Lane. The pedestrian connectivity is still there. One of the bigger elements that is introduced into this new site plan is the use of alleys. And I'll talk about this a little later, but that really helps bring that urban and pedestrian oriented type character of development to the site. It takes the multifamily buildings and faces them outward to the public realm. You get a much more attractive street frontage for those residential uses. It also helps do that same pedestrian fronting treatment to the commercial space. The goal here is to create synergy between those uses. How do we get multifamily residential and commercial to live and grow together? That's just one aspect of the plan is face the pedestrian realm to the commercial. I'll talk, I heard the comments on traffic and cut through traffic here. So just to address that, there, this intersection is, it's designed as a, can you see my cursor? Is it up? No. Yeah, let's do this guy. So this intersection here is designed as a curb apron, not as a curb return. A curb return would be what you see here, where it's a nice smooth radius. The curb apron, it's more feels like a driveway. It's got a bump to it. It inherently slows traffic. Similarly, these parking islands, as you come out, have been brought out into that driveline, narrowing that driveline. That's another form of traffic calming, trying to make this feel like a pedestrian zone and limiting that cut through traffic. I think another question was on lighting, specifically around that trail on the western side. I can't speak to why Public Works decided not to require that. However, it is, that trail is off-site, is outside of the project boundary. And it's an existing trail, for what that's worth. Here we see just a comparison of what was previously approved site plan with, with the P U D in 2017, how it compares to the one today. As I mentioned, commercial is nearly identical. There are small changes in building footprints. Overall square footage is the same. On the residential, again, you see the single-family detached on the northwest corner, transitioning as it goes to the east. We now have just one cohesive approach to the residential. Just to touch a little more on the architecture, that the multifamily buildings present themselves in a duplex, a triplex and a fourplex. And these have been designed in-house with Markel. One of the great things about having Markel stick with this project from 2006 and all the way till now is they have been involved in the architectural design from day one in 2006. And they know what they've designed and what has worked and what has not. And they know the materials that have worked and have not. They know the roof forms. And so as you look through the architecture here at Block 11, you'll see materials and roof forms and massing and proportions that are similar to other materials, roof forms, massings that you see throughout the rest of North End. The, each of the duplex, triplex and the fourplex have two different design themes to them, a farmhouse and a modern style. The farmhouse picks up more on some of the single-family detached design cues with the gable roofs, while the modern has more of what you see directly north of Heckla with the mono pitched roofs and flat roofs. As I mentioned, one of the big moves here is the alley that has the garage doors facing away from the public realm. The streetscape's no longer dominated by, by the garage door. You have defined entries with canopies. You have a nice articulated base that is at a pedestrian scale, all fronting that public realm. The individual proportions of units in between have also been taking design cues from the existing multifamily directly across the street. Building height, I do want to touch just a bit more on the building height. These are the four buildings which the waivers are being requested. Again, you can see the red line of what the max height is versus where those buildings end up. They're anywhere from five inches to 25 inches over that limit. And just to shed a little more light on, on how that came to, why, why are we asking for this? It's not that these three residential buildings are physically any taller than the other three. That the way that the code measures building height is from proposed grade. And so obviously, the grade slopes throughout a site. And in some areas of site, it's steeper than others. So in these three conditions, that proposed grade differential is just slightly over what that allowed height is. The structure itself remains at a constant height across, across the site. If that make, we, I can discuss that more if there's questions. Here we look at how these, the architecture compares to some of the existing contexts in the area. The top left image represents the existing multifamily on the north side of Heckla. And you can see the design cues that have been directly picked up and brought into this proposed commercial building. It has the mono pitched roofs on the corners. Even some of the window patterning, the fenestration have been carried over from the, that the multifamily into the commercial, tying those two together. Similarly, on the right side of the screen, you see existing townhomes that are on the north side of Heckla and how the proportions and ratios of those units break down the mass in a similar way of the multifamily buildings proposed. Just to really hammer home the building height point here, this is a diagram talking about the existing building height versus the proposed building height on Heckla. So this is a section of Heckla. And you can see that the building heights are comparable and in some areas lower than what is existing there today. To wrap up, I do want to talk about the comprehensive plan in the small area plan. I think these are always really important documents and do a lot of good in, in guiding how development occurs within the town. And the urban pattern that's explained in the comp plan, really, the goal here is to provide a lot of connectivity, interconnected streets, pedestrian, for pedestrians and vehicles, smaller parcels that have alley loaded homes and really orient everything to the pedestrian. Within the small, small area plan, they have their own set of community design principles. And, and it's all wrapped around, how do you blend this use? It recognized the tension between commercial and residential. And how do you knit those two experiences together? How do you make it a place that is a destination, but also somewhere to live? How do you make it somewhere to stay and go? So how that relates to Block 11 and this specific site plan, really, this is a perfect example of how to take a comprehensive plan guidance and a small area plan guidance and create that vision. These are homes that are fronting the public realm with alley loaded. They create an urban environment, pedestrian friendly. There's a lot of connectivity here. There's three different vehicular access points, several pedestrian paths offsite. And, and it provides both a place to stay in the residences and a place to arrive at in the commercial. So I really enjoy this project because it does take soup to nuts of development with a GDP that started in 2006, a comprehensive plan, a small area plan, all really culminates to, to this and responds to each one respectively. So with that, that's the summary where we've got our whole team here to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner, questions?
Go ahead. I have one, just real quick one, and that is, this is really getting into details right away. So zooming from high level down to really, really, really detail level. Can you walk me through the, like, sort of the landscape maintenance of this area? And how the, the responsibilities of the development team are on the maintenance of this area? So again, we've talked about a number of trees that are dead and are going to be replaced as part of this project and part of the landscaping. That's great. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, where is, is the responsibility for the maintenance of some of this block in the HOA? Or can, could you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. And I think this kind of stems back to a question I heard about the multifamily designation on this. And it is, it will be under an HOA. And maintained by the HOA. And commercially, I may have to defer to one of the Markels to speak to how, how that will be handled. I can bring them up.
Yeah, yeah, please. And then the current, like, the, how is the, how has the property been, you know, managed in this kind of interim period? Is there a plan so that if there are, if there is landscaping that's dead, is there a replacement plan? Or can, it'd be great to kind of hear that spoken to, thanks.
Yeah, Jason Markel, 5723 Rappahoe.
Yeah.
In Boulder. And yeah, so North End is under an HOA. Part of that has been turned over on other parcels.
Yeah.
And so Block 11 will have, you know, its own HOA. And, you know, we will be under the guidelines of the master, you know, of North End. And so it has its own sort of declaring rights and its own sub-associations for Block 11.
Okay.
And then regarding kind of maintenance activities, you know, that sub-association, you know, will be responsible for maintaining and, you know, replanting any, you know, flora.
Yeah.
And, and then as far as, you know, commercial to residential, I think we'll have, you know, you know, joint maintenance agreements between the two.
Okay.
So that there won't be anything kind of lost in the shuffle.
Okay. All right. And currently, who, who, who's responsible for the maintenance of, of the areas around Block 11 now?
Um, you know, we have a couple of different maintenance companies that we work with. But right now, you know, we are, you know, the declarance. And so we manage that and mow it and kind of keep it contained and manicured.
Okay, thanks very much.
While, while you're up, can you speak to the multifamily versus townhomes issue? And, and your plans for the properties?
Yeah, so you know, just between multifamily and, you know, the HOA is sort of the reasoning behind that. If it was all fee simple, we could probably do without an HOA, which a lot of builders are doing lately. You know, once we wanted to sort of get the detached, single-family sort of out of that commercial zone, which I think is very applicable, you know, with, with the car wash and the commercial and the multifamily. I think it's better, you know, how it is, you know, proposed, where, you know, we have a HOA that can be uniform across that. Because if we had single-family detached over there, it's sort of a carve out and it would be its own sub-association because it's such a different product type that it wouldn't be kind of cohesive with what's happening in the, you know, block. So that's sort of the impetus of why we went with, you know, that revised, you know, bulk standards.
And what's your current understanding of net zero and multifamily in Lewisville?
Um, you know, just to give you an idea, you know, single-family, you know, we definitely do a decent amount of, you know, net zero building or net zero ready building, you know, on single-family. When you switch to multifamily, it is sort of a different ballgame due to party walls. So when you have a party wall, it really kind of exacerbates sort of leakage. And it's a little harder to obtain that net zero. So it's, you know, I can sort of go, go on about it, but it's really challenging, you know, moving forward as a, as a city adopting codes and whatnot to adopt a net zero code for the multifamily. So it's, it's extremely challenging.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any, any other questions?
I just have one question, which is, a conversation we've been having a lot in the context, especially of these mixed use type developments, is commercial vacancies in Lewisville. And I was actually surprised and pleasantly surprised to see this P U D amendment come in with the same commercial square footage that was previously approved. And sort of, I guess my question is more out of curiosity than anything else. What's your optimism about filling 40,000 square feet of commercial?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, especially, you know, right now with COVID and how, you know, commercial has kind of taken it on the chin. You know, we are kind of planning on, you know, adhering to the phasing requirements, which, you know, we're putting in foundations and thereby kind of moving into our residential capacities. But, you know, I think we would like to have, you know, some ability where, you know, if commercial just takes an absolute nosedive here in the, you know, next couple of years, you know, we want to put our best foot forward. And, you know, in 2017, you know, we had a phasing requirement. And we would like, you know, to adhere to that. I would hope that there'd be some elasticity in the future if commercial was completely, you know, you know, sideswiped, that we could maybe, you know, look into that again. Hopefully, we wouldn't, you know, have to sit there with, you know, four vacant buildings, all just sort of collecting dust. But I think for right now, you know, we are hopeful that we can get those, you know, vacancies filled and kind of progress into that or find some, you know, tenants who are, you know, wanting to partner up with us. And, you know, we can work it that way. But, you know, I think it brings up a good question of, you know, in the future, if the, you know, commercial landscape has changed drastically, you know, maybe, you know, we can, you know, relook at that and, you know, try and have some elasticity there. But right now, we're, we're committed to the phasing plan.
Great, thank you.
There's no questions, Commissioner Howe.
Can you just comment real quick on that affordable housing? And you're, help us understand why you're doing the fee and lieu versus no, no affordable housing there?
Yeah, um, you know, there's sort of a financing aspect to things where we come forward with a multifamily building and some units are affordable and some units are market rate. It presents a major challenge in getting the building financed. It's better, not just for us, but I think for other residents to have it, the whole building, you know, be sort of a affordable. So with this breakup, you know, when we look at it and we're performing it and we're checking it all out and we're talking to staff, I think, you know, we were under the assumption, you know, that we wanted to bring forth a cash and lieu option, which, you know, enables us to, you know, you know, bring market rate units to help offset that. But if we had to sort of intermix affordable units, you know, it presents A, a financing challenge and B, it's sort of, you know, ruins the attainability of the market rate units. So I think, you know, when we donate cash and lieu or we, you know, pay our cash and lieu fees, you know, the city is able to kind of aggregate that and bring forth the whole project. And it's more, it's more cost effective. it's more cost-effective and you get more, you know, affordable units that way. If we have to do it and, you know, there's affordable units kind of intermixed, we have to offset that because it is probably more expensive with raising the market rate units. And these units are sort of designed to be a little more attainable and kind of address some of the, you know, housing issues in the county. And so, you know, sort of that middle class getting aced out of Boulder County, which is sort of, you know, the housing crisis right now. We're trying to, you know, get these units, you know, efficient enough where we can hit a sector of the market that is sort of not there right now.
Could you share a dollar value to that? What is attainable?
You know, just in the last, you know, in the last couple of months, you know, we went from all-time highs, including, you know, all of our costs have been at an all-time high. So it's so volatile. And just in the last six months, you know, everything just came to a grinding halt. So, you know, sales are extremely hard to come by in this last, you know, four months. So, you know, I think, you know, costs are kind of stubborn right now and they're holding, you know, higher than we would anticipate with how, how short of sales options we are. But I think in the next, you know, four months, you're going to see costs coming down. So everything's incredibly volatile, probably the most volatile in the last, you know, 50 years. And so we've seen these swings. So it'd be sort of, you know, shooting myself in the foot to throw out a price right now because we're hoping that in the next year, we're going to see a drastic, you know, change in our costs hopefully. And costs will be coming down and, you know, hopefully, sales prices will adjust too. But, you know, at the same time, there could be, you know, you know, more, you know, costs have, you know, sort of been in the stagflation realm right now. So it's a little hard to say.
What would your fee and lieu cost be?
You know, I would have to check with staff on that. I believe, what is it? It's a square footage calculation. And so I'd have to do the mental math, but I don't have that offhand.
All right. Additional questions?
I don't know if this will be for you, probably for the architect to comment on the water runoff and water retention. Typically with PODs, we're typically concerned about where this retention would be and don't see much on this development. So
Yeah.
wondering where that, if there's a plan for that or not.
Yeah. So we, we already have the detention accounted for for this block. So the detention for the neighborhood was designed to accommodate this block. And since there wasn't a drastic change in hardscape, it's all been accommodated, all the flows.
You know, there are areas of North End?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, great. Yes. Yeah, right to the east of the, yeah, Blue Star there.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Thanks for the applicant.
You spoke of the lead buildings that Markell Homes has done. Can you speak to where those are and what certifications they received?
Yeah. You know, we're, we get probably Blue Sage, Silver Creek, North End, all single-family homes that we build. Most, or I should say, most single-family homes that we build. Sometimes when we have a custom, that's a one-off on its own lot, it's difficult to obtain, you know, lead ratings because, you know, just the way our subdivisions are designed, you know, we take that into account and we get a lot of lead accredited points in the matrix for that. And so where we have, you know, single-family homes in a neighborhood, all of our single-family homes that we build in neighborhoods is lead rated. And so we have anywhere from lead accreditation to silver, I would say, is sort of our more higher, higher performing homes.
So some of the homes in North End are LEED certified?
Yeah, some of the later homes that we've done in North End up on Block 20 are LEED certified.
But do you intend to pursue certification for any of the multifamily here?
You know, multifamily, they're still sort of, you know, we're still ironing out that program. All of our single-family homes, we do zero energy ready and lead. But like I said, multifamily is a little harder to obtain that just due to that party wall environment.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Asterman, again, you don't have to chime in now, but do raise your hand if you want to ask any questions. So, all right. Any final questions right now? Seeing none. We will move into public comment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
With that then, I believe we have some cards.
Yes, we do. The first person up is Mr. Mark Cathcart, followed by Tim Merkel.
If you can double-check with Zoom.
Good evening, Mark Cathcart, 1763 Sweet Clover Lane. And before I start, I'd just like to thank you for the work that you all did and will still have to do on Redtail Ridge. I didn't take a position on it, but I thought you handled it very professionally. So on behalf of those of us that weren't on one side or the other, thank you, and I look forward to hearing how you decide. I'm the past president of the Master HOA and was previously a director while it was still under declarant control. I live in Sweet Clover Lane. I have to tell you that whatever remarks you've read from me or that I make tonight, I really don't want this and nor do I think the city or the rest of the residents. We don't want this application held up. As much as the declarant looks after the block as it currently is, whenever the wind blows, it's just a dust bowl. So the applicant promised us all this vision of multi-use commercial. We were sold it. I bought a dirt lot and had a, picked a house and had it built. And others have done that too. So we all want this built, right, as soon as possible. And otherwise, perhaps we should consider landmarking the construction trailer, the porta potty and shipping containers that have been there for six years. I hadn't really considered a porta potty a community benefit when buying my lot in 2014. I have three concerns for you tonight about this development. And two of them are to do with the traffic, which you've read my notes and the slides. And I do not want this application to be held up for those. It's, the Plaza Drive one is a matter of the traffic backing up from the traffic light onto South Boulder Road, and it blocks Heckle Way. Now, when we first dealt with this through the city planning and public works department, they extended the time on the light and that improved it a little. So with the additional commercial traffic there, this will become a problem again. And having seen the applicant's drawings tonight, the pictures rather than the actual planned drawings, it does make the exit from Sweet Clover Lane look less attractive. Because otherwise, we can't get out. If you want to go left on Plaza Drive, if the traffic is backed up and blocks Heckle Way and the exit from the King Supers, we can't get out. But as I say, I think that's a city problem. Now, the applicant as well has followed the designs and the requirements. So I don't want this to get held up. The other problem that we have is the Blue Star Lane exit is badly designed. There are daily illegal left turns from there. Again, I don't want this application to be held up for that. And I don't believe the applicant who's followed all the rules deserves to have his application held up because of that. I think it's something the city needs to deal with, and I will raise that when this application gets to the city council. As I understand it though, if the replat of this application is passed, then it's quite possible that the that the applicant could actually sell the three lots separately, which I think is problematic. Or while I understand why he's doing it, those lots once permitted can be sold independently. So I personally have some concerns about that because if the lots get sold independently once permitted, the, the mixed-use thing is gone, right? You, as the planning, and the city council cannot dictate what an individual lot owner does with their lot beyond, you know, what it's zoned for. So I do have some concerns. I'm not, I agree that I'm not a planning law or process expert. But I do believe that that's something that you can ask the declarant about, but it's not a reason that you can block it tonight. And since we've waited now 10 years for this application to be built, I have worked in other cities where they require the applicant to place money in an escrow or in a convertible bond that is repaid on the completion of the lot or the development. So for example, here, we've absolutely got to have Lot 1 done first. I'm sure the applicant will tell you that's their plans. But once we're done with this process, there's nothing to stop them not pulling the permits. So again, I don't think that's something that you can rule on, but I will be raising it with the city council. I think that it is a concern that we'll be through this for the third time and the applicant won't pull the permits and start again. And just briefly on the lighting, since you brought it up, we actually have Speedy Sparkle, the King Supers gas station and the dispensary that have lights on all night, every night, seven days a week. With no disrespect to Councilor Brown Eyes, there's no dark skies where we are, even though it's all new LED shielded lighting, which I'm sure is what the applicant's going to get put in, the reflection is just nonsense. It's my current understanding, and Director Zakaro can comment, that I don't believe Speedy Sparkle Car Wash has actually passed approval for their lights. They delayed it during the pandemic and at least from my perspective, have never come back to get their lights approved. They're on all night. The people in the townhomes opposite. Just nightmare. One of the ladies has had to move her bedroom to the back. So dark skies, nice idea. Please do what you can. Thank you very much and thank you again for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening. Did you guys get the little handout that I've got there? My name's Tim Merkel, not Markell. 1849 Sweet Clover Lane, and I'm the current president of the North End Master Association. So if I can be a resource for how the HOA and some of the HOA and landscaping would work, let me know. I'd be happy to be a resource. And that's why I'm actually here tonight. The 50% of the North End Master Association's budget goes to water and landscape maintenance. And we're trying to fix that one step at a time. And thanks to the GEP, there's a funny situation where the, the declarant or the builder installs treelons between the sidewalk and the curb. That's city land that is installed by the homeowner or the builder adjacent to that land. And then the master HOA takes over the maintenance of that strip. I think this creates a conflict of interest because whoever does the installation is looking for the cheapest possible option. And then the burden of maintaining those plants and watering them falls on the master HOA. And so what we've done in the master HOA is we've actually passed, we've proved a standard, which you guys have here for the North End Master HOA. And we've sent this to Markell and they verbally expressed openness to implementing this. But what we're trying to get away from is, and so I guess the ask is, we'd like to make, ask the Markell in the trelon areas on Heckle Way and Blue Star, adopt the North End Master Association standards, which are low water, local vegetation and low maintenance. And the reason why we've, you know, in addition to reducing water in the treelons usage, local landscape firms refer to these as hell strips. They're, when you put turf in there, they have to be mowed, which potentially damages cars, damages trees, emits CO2, creates noise, and then you have to clean it up with a, with a leaf blower, which creates more noise and more CO2. And, and so what we've done is we've, we've, we've proposed here vegetation that reduces noise, reduces water, improves the health of the trees, reduces damage to cars and, and saves everybody a lot of money. But it does require the declarant to, or the builder to invest a little bit more money upfront. So that's the ask tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We do have some attendees online, if you'd like to hear from them.
Great. It's not on my screen, but if you can.
Sure. Mr. Brian Topping?
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Topping. I own a single-family home at 1550 White Violet Way. That's about 50 yards from the, the development here that's under, under consideration. And like others who have spoken so far from the neighborhood, you know, we would like to see this developed as soon as possible. I moved in on, in 2016. At the time, we were, you know, with a wink and a nod, promised that we were going to see lots of services, no more housing. And, you know, with the exception of the, the rather beautiful condos that are built there now with the, the large butterfly roofs, there, that we were really supposed to have a walkable neighborhood that would, that would allow us to find community there. What we've, what ended up happening, you know, and I think this is a really interesting point of the presentations, which were, which were nice. I mean, this sounds like a pretty good proposal on the face value. And if you compare it to the previous proposal, but if you look back to the original proposal, what we bought into in the neighborhood and what we really thought we were possibly, you know, possibly the amenities were looking like a loss leader for the developer. But that these were an important part of what was getting built. This was the whole package we were buying into. That package has been changed from something that would support daycare, hobby stores, after-school learning programs. These have all been replaced with additional housing units. Started out with over 50 because they didn't want to burden the schools. And then it's getting into like, oh, and everything's been forgotten because of COVID. I don't know that that's actually fair to the neighborhood that, you know, bought into that and helped pay for these, these, you know, this expansion of the applicant and their business. You know, we kind of got shortchanged and the city did too. There's, there's really, if you look at the three legs of the proverbial CVP stool, those aren't being supported right now. That stool is unstable right now in that neighborhood. There's no, it's a half an hour walk downtown and it's a, not a very pleasant walk down. Call it, the, whatever that street is that goes down there, there's, there's barely any sidewalks. It's being improved, I hear, but it's, you know, not, not really where it should be. And, you know, to the, there's just a lot of problems with trust. I mean, I know several residents in North End who had to sue the applicant to even get forward motion on, on major structural and drainage problems in their homes. So, you know, if you look at the 20 years of history on this and you, you consider everything that's actually in play here, there's not a whole lot of, and also even just in city council. I mean, Steel Ranch is another example where people just laugh about the North End market. I mean, where's the market? I don't see a market here. So I do hope that this, the planning commission will take these under consideration and really put the screws down and compare to the original proposals instead of just, you know, what, what the previous report proposal was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Jojo Fulmer, followed by Sheri Sommer.
Hi, I'm Jojo Fulmer. I live at 1712 Steel Street in Lewisville. And I am generally always in favor of increasing housing in Lewisville because we need a lot more housing in Boulder County. I was pretty disappointed to hear about the fee and lieu thing that the developers are trying to do because affordable housing is so important and paying a fee to have it in a separate place will not be achieving one of the major goals of affordable housing, which it will just be creating basically a mini project to a lesser extent, obviously. But it will not be creating a more integrated community. It will be creating a more segregated community by socioeconomic status. And so these areas by socioeconomic status. And so these areas will continue to just be predominantly rich housing, even if it is multifamily homes, which with the goal to lower the housing price slightly. And so another thing was the sustainability things. I appreciate the sustainability goals already set, but as always, I just want to see if we can push that any further to get more commitments to sustainability or like either solar panels or solar panel ready and just various other sustainability commitments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. I don't think this should be rushed. I think it should be thought out. The problems and the issues of dust, porta potties and trailers have been created by the applicant. And that is no reason to rush a permanent building that will be here for the duration. First of all, I would like to advocate for not allowing the change to townhomes. We don't have energy codes that would currently be applicable and will be kind of at the mercy of the developer to set the energy codes. We already have heard that townhouses are less energy efficient due to the party walls. They have done higher energy standards for single family homes. But we really need to have something that's, that's more concrete. We don't have anything from council on multifamily. I'm very surprised that there's the same number of units, but there's no green space. If you look back at that one slide, it's very strange to me. And there's this continual emphasis of urban, urban, but I'm wondering where the green space was that was in the first iteration. Also with townhouses being taken out and changed to condos, will there be a change in ownership? Are these going to be all rentals? Because if they are, that is going to make a middle class mirage on this property. We really need to have it be ownership here. I believe that affordable housing should be included on site because the location is so close to the grocery store. RTD and every amenity that people would need. Getting the fee and lieu is a very bad idea because of inflation and we don't have any place that we will be putting that housing for now. So any money we get is going to just evaporate. It should be here. It should benefit our city. Their financing is their responsibility, not ours. There should not be a height waiver. As we heard earlier, the comp plan has a vision and the comp plan should be respected. And so to go higher than what the comp plan is asking for, I don't, I don't think is warranted because we don't want to have such a wall of buildings. I'm really, really, really concerned about concurrent development. As we've heard from Jason Markell, they hope to have some elasticity in the future. They're going to be pouring the foundations. They're not building the buildings. Those foundations could be used for anything as in housing. And we have already been burned four or five times at least in the North End where commercial is promised and it just evaporates. As the mayor said in one of the last meetings, she said, I just wish that people would stop providing, promising mixed development if it's just going to be apartments to say it's just going to be apartments. So please keep this in mind. That concurrent development requirement is extremely weak and I don't think it will do anything. I agree with the landscape. Please, there needs to be some insurance for watering trees because they will just die unless they are taken care of. So that needs to be taken care of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Marie Boric. Sure. Okay. So, so, okay. So actually next Kevin King, followed by Marie Boric. Okay.
Thank you. Kevin King, 1505 Heckaway 302. I'm the former North End 12 treasurer. At the start of Agenda 8A, the commission asked our planners if adequate notice to our community was given to this proposal. By the churn out, it's evident that that was done. However, what the community didn't receive was the plan presented today. The online documents for this were of the previous plan when many of us tried to download it. And we were not given access to this. So you saw many of us furiously writing notes to try to keep up. During the meeting, Commissioner Moline asked with Blue Star traffic shown there and the traffic light to eastbound, how are people going to get out with a left-hand turn with the Sweet Clover addition going southbound? What you're going to see is people using Heckaway recklessly in order to get around and causing a blockage at King Supers. We've already seen a high-speed collision at our condos with a, with someone trying to drive through on Heckaway. And I fear it's only going to become greater. The additionally, in the commercial units over at King Supers, there's been a pan, there's been several panhandlers that are there nearly every day. And with adjoining commercial and residential area with that intersection, I worry that the panhandlers will start interacting with the community and the kids who are coming back from school and walking to our homes. Commissioner Howe had a question about the net zero with solar. And I have a concern that the height of some of these buildings and potential solar panels could cause problems for people in the upper, the third floor units that I live in, including the townhouses to the side of that. I also question why a third story and a height waiver is required in building three. It seems like it's a few hundred square feet of what I could only see as penthouse commercial unit. I don't see that's beneficial to the community and why it should violate your height restrictions that you've put on to benefit us all. So finally, one second. I would strongly recommend that the community at large would have access to all of these documents so that we can come better prepared to give you feedback during the next meeting. Because I believe we're just currently writing notes and trying to describe what we saw. While Markell had legal counsel, had other members here and had a very well detailed presentation. And we're having to relay quick bullet points that we saw on our phone. Thank you.
Sorry, we need to get you up to the microphone first.
Marie Boric, 1505 Heckaway. I'm in 202, right below Kevin. Much of what I've been concerned about has already been addressed. So I'll just say, I know we're talking about approving a plan and that the traffic issues are a separate thing. But I am going to reiterate, yeah, Heckaway already with King Super trucks, gas trucks. And might I add, my neighbor's rule attests that I am outside most of the time walking a dog. And I cannot tell you the speed that I see coming across Heckaway and the congestion when it comes into going into King Supers and that tribe. So that's one of my biggest concerns. My second concern is again, when we get this approved, is there a timeline? Let's get this done. So we don't, I agree. I've been there since 2017 and we still have that lot open. And it would be nice to know what's going in. So the last thing I want to ask, I agree with Kevin. I think I went online and tried to see what the risk is going to look like. And I couldn't figure out anything. I'm holding what I got when I bought my condo and it looks nothing like what I, well, there is some resemblance. I will give it that way. But here's my question. She brought up the idea of green space. And the only thing I saw was one area with a bench and concrete walls. Is that in the commercial area or is it in the residential? Does anybody know? So that's my concern because for example, where our condos are because of the topography, we have no benches around us at all. If you want to sit down, I sit on the front steps or you have to walk all the way to the lake area. I would like to see something in this area. Doesn't have to be huge, but some kind of an area with a number of benches where you can go out and sit. So that's one of my concerns. And I don't know. I think that's about it. They mentioned plazas and then that bench area. And I don't understand where the plazas are either, if that's open space. So that's my main concern that we have a little area there or something. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am not seeing any other hands raised online and we don't have anyone else who submitted a card for commenting.
All right. I have a motion to, we're going to enter this into the public record. What do we, do we have a name for this additional document that was provided?
Yes, you can email it to us for the record. That would be great. And, and maybe you could just reference the gentleman's name, the handout to enter that into the record if you want to. Yeah.
Okay.
And you can email it to planning@lewissville.co.gov. Yep.
All right. If we could have a motion.
Yep. I move to, I move to incorporate the materials we received from Mr. Tim Merkel into the record.
In a second. Thank you all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Let's see. All right. At this point, then we would invite the applicant up for response and closing statement.
Hi, Sam Kuzian. I'm going to kind of split duty here and take as much as I can and I'll hand some off. Let's see here, starting at the top. Tim, to your question about treelons, I think that's completely doable. I, as a landscape architect, hate treelons. They, I agree, they're, they're very difficult to maintain. They are a waste of water. So I've talked with Markell and they're comfortable adopting your trelon standards. I assume they're Zurich type standards. I haven't read them myself. Yep. So that addresses Tim's comment. For sure. Brian's comment on commercial. And I think Brian was speaking to what, you know, building a foundation and then leaving. What really guarantees that this is commercial, not turning a foundation of commercial into a residential use are these approved documents. These documents go in front of building plan reviewers as they're reviewing building permits. And, and they make sure everything's lining up. So it's not something that pulling the wool over the, what's the phrase, the wool over the sheep's eyes? Yeah. Where, where they're developing and pouring a commercial foundation, switching those residences. These documents guarantee that that will be commercial. I'm going to have Markell talk to Jojo's concerns about affordability and sustainability. As with Sherri's, Kevin and Marie had concerns about open space. And I can touch on that, that the, the open, open space is a a difficult term because it implies green. But open space just means more that this is not a building. So open space can be in forms of urban plazas. It can be in forms of detention facilities. It can be patios. These are all types of spaces that someone can enjoy being in the open and use outside. And following, this plan follows the comprehensive plans vision of a, of an urban environment. North End as a whole, the GDP as a whole, provides lots of other options and types of open space. And that's seen throughout the development with Heckaway Lake and the detention facilities and the other common, common open space throughout the HOA. So this is just another type of open space in this more urban environment. The, I did want to reinforce that the multifamily buildings are planned to be for sale, not for rent. So these are condos, not apartments. I think I heard the word apartments thrown out a couple of times. Just wanted to clarify that. I think that hits the majority of, I'm going to have Markell touch on the sustainability and the affordability pieces. Were there any others that I missed? Sure. Yeah.
Maybe if you could just talk a little bit more about that urban orientation. So, you know, if you compared those, those two images that you had, there's this one that, you know, clearly shows less green than the other one. And if you could, if you could talk through that, that might be helpful. I have a sense that in the other, in the other slide, that there were driveways that would have been, no, maybe not. Okay.
Yeah. You are correct. So the main difference here is on the left, this was a really preliminary sketch.
Yep.
Where it's just showing building footprints, not all, I call it the guts of the plan are not shown on this. So there are, there would be driveways. There are additional sidewalks. There's all this other stuff that's not green on that, that previous plan that's not being shown. It looks more green. In reality, there would be those facilities there.
Okay, thank you. And then would those, would those, with those units fronting on Heckla, would those have been front loaded?
Dig back in the memory.
Oh, okay. No, no. Okay.
No, those were all alley loaded. So there would have been an alley. As I said, that was a preliminary drawing.
Okay. Thanks. That's very helpful.
Thank you. We're going to pause. Actually, we'll give another five minute break. And we'll let the applicant team for the Arthur Avenue know that we're not going to be able to get to your project this evening. So it's a 10 minutes to nine now. So if we take a five minute break, thank you.
No, come up.
Okay. We started again, actually.
Should I start again?
Please.
Yes. So my name is Michael Markell, 5723 Arapahoe Avenue in Boulder. And I just wanted to, you know, talk about a few things and I, a couple of things, what I'd like to say first of all is I'd like to thank the city, you know, for doing, you know, a lot of the heavy lifting here. And I think they've done a lot of work and I think they've addressed a lot of issues. And I think they've really, you know, helped, you know, the project, you know, be a better project. And of course, I thank my team because I think we've got a dedicated team. And you've had some introductions and you've heard, you know, them, you know, talk about the project. So I'd like to thank everybody. I also like to thank commissioners, you know, for this opportunity. And the Block 11, of course, has a lot of history. And when we started the project, you know, that was probably going to be our last, you know, phase of North End, you know, for a variety of reasons. And one of them was, you know, the commercial piece. And what we were holding out for on the commercial piece, and we're still holding out on, is to create, you know, some neighborhood services, you know, at those units. People say, well, you know, this has been around here for years. And what, what the people don't know is I had, you know, 24-hour fitness, you know, people come up and they wanted to take, you know, 30,000 feet here. And I don't know if you've ever, and I turned them down. I said, no, I'm not having a fitness center that has 30,000, you know, square feet and then all the, you know, parking that's associated with that. I don't know if you've ever been to a 24-hour fitness place, but you know, the ones that I've been to, they take up the entire parking lots and neighborhoods. And so I turned them down. It was from a financial standpoint, you know, people were saying, why don't you just take it? You know, you're going to beat your brains in trying to, you know, make everything work here. But I said, you know what? I'm not selling out, you know, to a large corporation to, you know, come in here and put a huge footprint, you know, on this property and, and destroy my neighborhood. And my image of this neighborhood has been that, yes, it's mixed use. And we have, you know, residential units here mixed in. And I know that, you know, there's been a few iterations of that, but I'm not a, I'm not a track home builder. I don't come in and build, build a project and actually just stamp it out and build it, you know, in two or three years. You know, we've taken some time to build here. We've got custom homes. We've got townhomes. We've got condos. You know, we've got single family and also all sizes. And, you know, we're proud of that. And what we're trying to do here is complete this last, you know, vacant piece of ground. Yes, I'll admit it's taken a long time and, you know, it's unfortunate. We've also had a turn of events here that, you know, over the last two or three years, with the COVID piece, commercial property, you know, you can't give it away. We are going to build commercial buildings here and we're going to, you know, attempt, you know, to get the kind of And we're going to, you know, attempt, you know, to get the kind of people that we have always represented, you know, to the neighbors and to the city. The only changes that I've made in this particular project in the last five or six years is that housing types have changed. You know, people want different types of housing. Things get dated. You know, we have to, you know, we have to react to the marketplace. So for us, you know, yes, we're building some townhomes. And, but we're proud of our townhomes and our condos. I don't know, Jason didn't get a chance to mention this, but we're the only builder in the Front Range that builds Energy Star condominiums. And I was just talking to some of my residents. They were saying, you know, we have really low energy, you know, energy bills, you know, at our condominium building. And, you know, we feel good about it. And I'm not, but I, yes, I hear that there's some people that, you know, maybe are unhappy about different things. And, you know, we've built hundreds of units, you know, so there are going to be some ones that, you know, we try to do the best we can. There's going to be some people we're never going to make happy, and I get it. But at the same time, when you talk about sustainability, there's nobody else building Energy Star. A net zero commercial building is extremely difficult and very expensive, you know, to try to make that work. And I think you're, as you go ahead with your, you know, code issues, you know, with zero, zero net commercial buildings, you're going to hear a lot of people talk about that, that it's very difficult to build, you know, those kind of buildings. But I feel good and I feel proud of my team building Energy Star 12-plex condominiums in this particular area. And we've had them tested. They've been proven just by talking to some of the residents, you know, about their bills. So we feel very comfortable that what we're building is probably the best condominium buildings, you know, from a sustainability standpoint, that they're building in this territory. And especially when we built these, you know, five, six years ago. Maybe there's people that are, are starting to do that, but it's, it's unusual. And you don't find that. But from our sustainability piece, we're proud, you know, of building, you know, the buildings that we built. And I think that, that we have some issues that people are unhappy with. But I would say, if you ask people about their energy, you know, pieces and their bills, you know, I think you'd find out, you know, that they're probably lower than what they expected. So, you know, Block 11's been controversial. I get it. You know, we've, we've made some changes, you know, in the residential, you know, part of this. We're committed, you know, to, you know, what the staff had asked us to do as far as, you know, being, you know, putting, getting building permits and, you know, building a building. I think what my son was saying is that, yes, we're going to build some buildings. But we want to make sure that those buildings get occupied. And the, all along North End, the commercial buildings at this, at this particular location were always going to be subsidized, you know, by the residential development. These buildings at this, you know, B or C location don't pencil. And they didn't pencil four or five years ago. And now with COVID, they definitely don't pencil. But we're going to try to bring the, you know, we're going to subsidize people to come here to give the neighborhood services that we've, that we've envisioned. So we're going to, if someone wants to create a coffee shop or someone wants to, you know, have a business there, we're going to try to figure that out, you know, to try to subsidize them so they can work. And that's, you know, that's a big part of, you know, what we're talking about here. So we feel really good about, you know, what we've done at North End. We, we feel good about this particular proposal. And we're going to move forward on it. And we're going to complete, you know, what we're, what we're talking about here as far as, you know, the units. And I'm trying to think of, you know, on the affordable housing side, you know, it's, what happens with affordable housing when you have deed-restricted housing? And I've built hundreds of units, you know, in Boulder County. And I'm probably the leading builder of workforce housing. And I might be one of the leading builders on-site, you know, workforce housing. But one of the problems that we've got with these 38 units, that if we do a certain portion of them deed-restricted, the baseline cost, you know, of the, the market rate units are going to go sky-high. And it, you know, and that's what's happened in all our subdivisions. We don't always cry about that, but at the same time, it's, at some point, you say, can the city develop more affordable housing, you know, by the fees that we're going to generate off of this, than, you know, the half a dozen or eight units, you know, whatever that may be here? Can they take that money and leverage it into some, you know, larger projects, you know, where you can get more than, you know, five or six units? Absolutely. You'll be able to take the fees from this project, leverage it into affordable housing. It's of different locations. And you're going to find yourself with three times as many units as we could provide here. And then we wouldn't have the disparity between the market rate units being, you know, a million dollars. And all of a sudden, you know, the affordable units are 300,000 or 400,000 or whatever they may be. I don't have all the exact numbers, but I've been doing this deed-restricted housing, you know, since the 70s. And I'm proud of what we've done. I believe in it. But I also know that, you know, neighborhoods, you know, that I've worked in in Boulder, we've got, you know, deed-restricted housing. And then we got, you know, in order to subsidize the deed-restricted housing, the rest of the housing, you know, is, you know, a million plus. You know, so I've, I've done a lot of onsite, you know, building. And it, I'm going to continue to do that. But in this particular area, it, it doesn't, you know, work in the city's best interest, you know, to try to put some deed-restricted housing here. And all the rest of the units, you know, get pumped up sky-high, especially in the type of shortage that we have of some kind of obtainable housing. And I, I know that the price range is, you know, when we talk obtainable, obtainable's gotten to be almost ridiculous. You know, in this current atmosphere that we're in, you know, with the inflation that we've had. You know, we've had, you know, things, you know, North End might even be a good example, but in other places, you know, we were building, you know, houses, single-family houses in Lafayette, you know, just a year and a half ago for, you know, 300,000, you know, 350. And, you know, people are reselling them now, you know, for 650,000, 700,000. And our costs, you know, over the, you know, in this last, you know, 12 to 18 months, has just been, you know, gone through the roof. So it's, it's very challenging to build deed-restricted housing and trying to cap any kind of obtainable. You know, affordable to me means deed-restricted. And to me, obtainable is market rate that are, you know, good prices. So I don't want to, you know, beat this one up too much. And, you know, I know it's late and we want to, you know, you know, take this, you know, to some kind of a vote. But, you know, there's, there's some things that as a developer, you've got some control of some things and you, and you don't have control of many others. And right now, we don't have any control on our costs. I mean, I know everybody would like to say, well, developers, you know, they're just making a lot of money. It's not true. But developers, you know, we got to make money, you know. But in order to, you know, if you've got, you know, increased prices, some of our prices, you know, our lumber costs, you know, are triple, you know, what they were just a year and a half ago. So as costs go up, you know, you're going to have to raise your pricing. And I don't want to belabor that fact, but at the same time, it is difficult, you know, to try to, you know, keep everything, you know, on an even keel and, you know, try to, you know, produce, you know, housing that you can feel proud of. And, and I think that's, that's what we're all about. We're about our product. And the reason that we didn't sell out all of our lots to big Wall Street, you know, builders, they come to us every, every year and say, hey, sell us 40 or 50 lots. I said, I'm not selling you 40 or 50 lots in one of my subdivisions where you just stamp out a bunch of, you know, cookie cutter houses. I'm going to build these houses. And we've got a lot of diversity. We're really proud of our designs. And we're proud of what we're producing here. And I think, you know, when we get to build it, I think everybody's, you know, going to be satisfied, you know, with the result. And I know that nothing's perfect. And it's hard, perfection's hard to get there. But we're working as hard as we can to make this the last phase and something that we can feel comfortable about. And when I look at the designs and what we're building here, I think that they're, I think they're very good. So, you know, I'm proud of it. So if you have any other questions, we're happy to answer it.
Commissioner Howe.
Hey, yeah, Mr. Markel, can you just comment on the concurrency of the developments of the three lots?
Phasing.
Phasing.
The face, well, you know, I think we're trying to figure out, you know, we're trying to figure out how, you know, how you can divide some of this up, you know, so it's bite-sized chunks. And so that we've got specific lots, you know, for the residential. And then we've got, you know, one lot, you know, that's the commercial. And when you're, you're talking to development lenders, you know, and financial people, they're not, and one reason why this isn't vertical mixed use, where you have commercial with, you know, units on top, they like to see things separated because some people will do some commercial, you know, lending, and some people only do residential. So we've got some residential lots, you know, that we have here that are in different phases. And then we have a commercial piece. And there's going to have to be some kind of separation within the HOA that we have here because that's what they require. They don't want to co-mingle the commercial, you know, with the residential because then they have problems, you know, with selling, you know, secondary, you know, selling mortgages to secondary markets. And there's all kinds of, you know, issues, you know, that revolve around that. So that's, that's the main reason. I don't know if I gave you a good answer, but
It won't be developed at the same time because of financial lending.
Well, I
That'd be right.
I'm not saying they won't be, they are going to be developed concurrently, you know, if that's what you, I thought you meant that the lots had something to do with the construction.
That was my question.
Well, the way we've sliced this pie, you know, we did three phases. And the phases, you know, have a north-south access to them. So that you've got residential and commercial, phase one, same thing in phase two, same thing in phase three. So, you know, what the staff has come up with and said, okay, you can build some residential there, but you're not moving on to your next until you, you know, show us a building. And so we're going to, you know, build that building. So there's no, you know, taking our, you know, marbles and going home, you know, in this project because we want to build it.
No, you don't.
And we're the ones, I think, that proposed the phasing. And I think that the, the staff is the ones that said, okay, well, if you want to do that, let's make sure that you build some commercial buildings. So we're committing to it.
Which of the buildings would be Energy Star certified? And Elizabeth, we've got a hot mic on Zoom. So we have, which of the buildings would be Energy Star certified?
Well, you know, our residential buildings, multifamily, you know, we've done Energy Star, you know.
Will these be?
Yeah, and these can be Energy Star also.
They will be?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions of the applicant? This is our last chance for questions of the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
All right, I will now close the pub, oh, no, I won't. I'll invite staff up. Can we ask staff her response and the closing statement?
Sure. So one thing that I did look at is, we did double-check the current developments webpage. And it did look like the latest version of the North End PUD was not put on there. However, the only changes that we did receive between that submiddle and this one were changes to the building heights on the elevations, as in the calculations, not the actual designs. So the overall design of the building elevations and the site plan have remained consistent between those sets. The only changes were related to the building height waiver calculations to make sure that the buildings were calculated from proposed grade.
And so in the current one, they're higher than previously?
Yeah, let me restate it. So the, the, the plan set that we posted online has the exact same site plan and the exact same building elevations shown. We worked with the applicant on redoing the height calculations because there was confusion about the methodology until the last minute. So the, like, the day before the packet went out, we got revised plans that showed the height waivers and clarified some notes, but everything else was the same. So the site plan posted on our current application website has the plans that are being proposed. Just that the height calculation waiver wasn't updated, but it was put in the packet.
So it was, the narrative was in the initial packet? Not with these?
Sorry, yeah, I'm trying to simplify this to some extent. I think what we're trying to say is, the plans that were available to the public online represent everything except the height waivers, because we didn't get the height, the up, there were height waivers included, but it was the wrong methodology. We got the updated methodology days before the packet went out. It went out in the packet correctly, but the website wasn't updated. Which is, oftentimes, our websites don't have the absolute most up-to-date plans. Oftentimes, we're getting plan sets right before packets go out. So that's not unusual.
Right, so the packet is accurate?
Yes.
So that's all we ever had?
Yep.
Unless we chose to dig deeper earlier?
Yeah, the packet is, yeah, updated.
That has not changed. Great. Thank you very much. Additional, any other response statements or closing statement from staff?
Not at this time. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Now I will close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Where we, and so during deliberations, it is the expectation that commissioners share where they intend to vote on this issue at hand. So as we discuss that, if you can share that with us, we'd like to begin.
Expected, but not required.
Expected. It's expected. Energy Star is required. Go ahead.
Well, I can start then. I think, I think that this is a great proposal. It seems like there's a lot of support in the community for this development to finally take place. And I think that that's great to see. I think it was very interesting. This is the second proposal that we've heard developers say that affordable housing, and this is for the benefit of the global perspective of our policies of the city, that affordable housing increases the baseline housing costs and is more fiscally responsible to pay in lieu. So we have to think whether that is what we want to achieve or not. Of course, that's a side note. But I think I'm in support for this. It'd be nice to have a little bit more, a little more green in the, in the plaza area or the, where the herringbone walkways are in the parkway. But I think overall, I think it's a good proposal.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mollin, please.
Go ahead. All right. Thanks, thanks, thanks. Thanks, Planner Hassan. And thank you, Public, for your comments. It's helpful for all of us. And thank you, applicant. The, I guess, one thing I, I am leaning towards supporting this and am in support of it, I should say. And I was in 2016, 2017, the last time we saw this. And at that point, for me, that's when I had more questions, if I recall, about sort of, is this the right place for some of this? And how can we ensure that we get some commercial along with residential? And I'll just say, you know, I live in a neighborhood where the commercial did get built, along with the mixed use. And now that commercial is vacant. So there's, you know, you can, I think we just have to recognize that we live in really challenging times. And it's hard to, it's hard to kind of predict how things are going to go, whether you, whether we kind of phase it along, which I, I think I like this approach of kind of moving through the site in these phases and trying to pair an amount of residential with, and, you know, not all the residential. So some of the residential with some of the commercial, I think that's, I think that, I like that approach. I hope it works here. But again, I just, just to say that, you know, you can require to get those buildings built. And again, like in our neighborhood, you know, then you get those built and then the tenant leaves. So, yeah, it's a complicated, complicated place out there. I think I might recommend the addition of a condition because I think I heard the applicant agree to some modifications of the tree lawn. And so I'm going to make a recommendation that we, that we, well, I don't know exactly.
Before they come to city council, that they
Thank you.
Have a solution in, in hand.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And do you want to specify that that's along Heckla Way? That seemed to be where the discussion revolved around.
Yeah, I think it was along both Heckla and, my understanding was along both Heckla and Blue Star. Can we allow?
Just for the sake of clarification.
So the
Yeah, okay, so I think we got it. So I, I think actually ultimately, we don't have to clarify that tonight specifically because they'll have to clarify it for city council. So if that works for So if that works for everybody.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, let's see, what else was I going to say? Oh, and, and then I, I was just make, going to make a comment on the green space. And some of the discussions we had around that. I am, um, I am in support of the kind of urban orientation that we wanted to see in our comp plan. And so the idea of, of, I, I guess I am, I, I appreciate the developer's attempt to kind of activate the street and the, the street front. And um, and so I'm, I'm willing to, to, you know, what, what might appear like there's less green space. Um, I'm, I'm willing to go with that because I, I like the idea of activating.
Alley loaded and.
Uh huh.
Alley loaded.
Yes, yeah, the alley loading and having, um, having the, the, or excuse me, having the, the frontage along the public ways. Um, you know, have that more active look to them, more urban look. So that, that's where I'm sort of leaning. I think, I hope that covers most of the things that. We've sort of talked about, so.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Hefner?
Thanks. Um, I would, I would echo the previous comments. Um, really appreciated the, the thorough presentations from staff. Um, that, the really excellent presentation from the applicant and all of the, the public comments. Thanks for sticking with us for three hours. Um. The, I'll just sort of run through the, the issues that are on my mind. Um, first being the height waiver, I see that as um. E- essentially de minimis. It's, it's two feet over a forty foot total height. Um, and, and with the lot grading that was explained, I, I don't see that as a, as a really substantial waiver. On the affordable housing piece, this is obviously a discussion we've continued to have in various contexts. I am encouraged to see duplexes and fourplexes and um lots of, uh, I, I think what folks refer to as missing middle housing types. Um, that will be on the more affordable end of market rate housing. And to me, that's a, that's an important factor. In doing the fee and lieu rather than building the, the units in. On the traffic concerns, I think I agree that there are, the majority of them are outside of this application. And really aren't, for our consideration tonight, I think they're important issues. I think I encourage everyone to bring them back to council. Um, the, the speeding issues, for me, this is, I think. The third or fourth meeting at which we've heard about speeding on residential streets being a serious issue. Um, so I, I, I hope you bring that before council. That's not necessarily planning commission's role, but it's something that I, I take very seriously. The traffic within the PUD on that, on that one extension, it, it was really helpful for me to see the more detailed site drawing and, and how the curb cuts were going to be. Um, have that traffic, traffic calming element and the parking bump outs. So I'm, I feel satisfied on that. Uh, and then I was also very pleased that the applicant was able to sort of make the adjustment on the tree lawns. Midstream and, and agree to the proposal, which was also, um, we don't always get such lovely proposals as part of public comment. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that. Um, so I'm also finding myself in support.
Thank you, Commissioner Osterman, if you are available. Uh, we've.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, i- i- yeah, I also um, am leaning towards being in favor of this application. Um. I, given the, the support in the community, I think it's, it's really important to move forward um. A- as quickly as possible with the application. Um, in, in terms of um. The change in the permitted housing types, um, that seems entirely appropriate for the North End area. And to me, um, seems like it's consistent with a more urban design that the comprehensive plan and small area development plan are trying to achieve. Um, so that, that all um sounds good. And um. I, I also um think that it's the request for the height waiver is reasonable. Um, it's not requesting a significant height increase um and isn't impacting the overall scale of the building. So that. Um, um, doesn't seem like a, an issue to me um to approve that waiver. Um, maybe just, I, regarding the inclusionary housing, I, I was disappointed to see that the developer was going. Is going in the direction of um fee and lieu, but also recognize that that's um. Um, that, that's something that they can pursue um per the, per the code. Um, and I think hearing the arguments that the developer brought to the table for um. Um, for, for the fee and lieu, um, I can understand better and also just um, I'm considering the fact that. Um, the planning and financing for this development um occurred before that provision was in place. And so. Um, it seems fair to me to um, um, to, to accept or consider the, the fee and lieu um option in this case. So I think, um, yeah, those are just some of the, the points I wanted to share. Um, it, I wasn't totally clear, um, if. The um, i- if we are then needing to include an amendment for modifying the tree lawn, if, if so, I. Um, also am in support of including language for that. Um, that would be great. Otherwise, um. I would be voting in favor for this uh application. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, I also find myself in favor at this time. Um, yeah, with the height waivers, it's relatively minimal and. Given that it mirrors some of the buildings that are there, it's just a different way of measuring it on a certain degree. Um, that, that's even kind of less of a concern for me. Um, I'm also disappointed that we don't have onsite affordable. Uh, and yet that's how we, as a city, wrote the ordinance. Um, so uh, that's, that's the option and, and city council gets to take that up. Uh, as they discuss it. So, um, I would like to see perhaps, uh, when you come to city council, addressing some of the traffic coming within this small little area. Um, whatever it takes, but I don't want to say, let's put in speed bumps. Maybe there's better ways to do it. Um, so if you can kind of brush up on that, that would be great. Um, with that then, did you have something else?
Say, um, it would be nice to have lighting along South Boulder Road consistent with what's in the South Boulder corridor. Would that, could we consider that as part of the?
It, it, it.
Would that be done anyway?
It is, yeah.
From city, okay. I just want to make sure.
I mean, that it's.
I thought so.
Lighting along there is going to be standard city approach to, that, I know we're not really open to questions right now, but.
Yeah, I think there would be. I'm not aware that South Boulder Road lighting is included in this.
But they're, they're not lighting South Boulder Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there, there's, it's just the existing lighting.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
No additional concern then.
All right. Um, it would be great to see that, uh, if all exterior lighting fixtures were dark sky complaint, that would be a nice direction. Especially, right, internally lit signs is a whole different issue. Um, sign code addresses that for the time being, so. And then for other people, um, we do need to change our code on a certain level. Um, when it comes to. We still have language out there in some areas of town that would require grass. So fortunately, that's not an issue here. But let's, uh, as we go through comp plan and, and subsequent LMC changes, we need, we need to get the, stomp out the grass. So. So, uh, with that, then anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Commissioner Howe, anything else you want to add?
No, I have nothing else.
Thanks. All right. Um, I would then call for a motion.
Good, uh, move the approval of resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution recommending approval of a general development plan amendment. A planned unit development amendment and a final plat with easement vacations for mixed use development. Consisting of thirty-eight residential units and forty thousand five hundred sixty-two square feet of commercial area for block eleven of North End at. One five zero one South Boulder Road. Uh, with the condition proposed by Commissioner Moline that the applicant um before, appearing before city council. Uh, in, incorporate the uh tree lawn plan that we received and admitted into the public record this evening.
Noting that our agenda mistakenly calls up block one, not block eleven. But we'll get that. So, all right, uh, roll call vote please. Oh, second, thank you. Commissioner Howe with the second. Roll call vote please, yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Carries to city council. All right, with that then, uh, we'll move into, uh, we have to have a motion to continue um. This, and actually, it doesn't have, it has a description. So I would entertain a motion to continue. Uh, planned unit development amendment fourteen eleven South Arthur Avenue.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Oh, and that's to date certain to December eighth. Um, so.
That's.
Move in a second. Actually, if we can ask you all to be quiet, we have to finish up our business here. Please step out and chat outside would be greatly appreciated. All right. Uh, so can we have a motion a second on that again? To continue. Resolution, we don't have those numbers on our agenda, actually.
It's actually resolution number fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yep, yeah. Of twenty twenty-two.
Fifteen, series twenty twenty-two to December eighth meeting.
This is, do you get them? So moved? Do we need?
Yeah.
Did you get that? Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Um, that will open it up to planning commission comments. I will, I'll start with one that, uh, I really enjoyed the uh city's trees this year. I mean, it was a good year for leaf color, but it also kind of highlighted how good of a job they have done in so many places throughout the city of, uh, having a varied selection of trees. Um, so. Props to them. Any other comments?
I was going to thank the city and whoever is involved for the um improvement at the intersection of South Boulder and Via Appia. It's a really heavily used intersection, including myself that I use it and uh much more friendly to pedestrians and, and street uh car movement. So thank you for everyone who's involved in that.
Excellent. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it to staff comments.
Uh, nothing other than noting at the uh December eighth meeting, we have the two continue items and we're anticipating a PUD fence amendment potentially as well.
There's also, uh, we are tentatively getting ready to schedule um a PUD and plat at six three two. And five seven eight South Pierce Ave, also known as Aperture. So. That's tentatively scheduled for December eighth.
Okay. Thank you for lending us that. Appreciate that. Um, with that then, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all.